I'm waiting until six. Are the Cub Scouts coming in here? Hey, let's follow the rules on video. Thought you'd like that.
There's a Cub Scout leader right there.
Call the meeting to order those that care to please stand for a opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron.
Let us pray. My fellow, we just thank you for this day and thank you for all you did to do for us. We're just thinking for the great weather that we've had through November. I just pray God that you would guide and direct us as we take on the city's issues tonight. Be with us in our budget and all that we do and all that we say. Just God continue to bless this city in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice scrawled.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. We just got done speaking, Mr. Franklin and I just got done speaking to a pack of Cub Scouts. And Mr. Franklin gave a very interesting speech about the flag. So as we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, I really thought about just saying, hey, could you educate us about the flag because it was a good speech. But we won't do that. We'll get on to business. So I would like to open it up for citizen participation. Anyone here wishing to speak to something not on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name, and we will be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen participation, move on to the consent agenda. Please note, we have five things on the consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments. I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving forward to boards, commissions, and committee schedules. We have a city council meeting on November 30th, 2021. Board of adjustments meeting December 2nd, 2021. Planning and zoning meeting December 6th, 2021. Do you want me to announce the city council workshop?
No.
Alright, city council workshop's been removed. And then another city council meeting December 14th, 2021. Moving on to old business, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-69 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri approving the final plat at the Birch Point subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff presented on this last time. Do we have any updates from staff? We're seeing head shaking. No? Any questions or comments or discussions from council? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-69.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click refresh. Maybe?
It's going now.
Alright, hit refresh now. And then cast your vote. And then hit submit vote. And then hit submit vote. I don't think it took.
I hit it.
You did.
Try it again.
Try it again.
Try it again.
Try it again.
Try this button right here. There you go. Alright.
About time.
Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to new business, item number seven on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-70 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri amending the zoning code an official map by changing the classification of approximately three acres from agricultural AG to multifamily residential R3 located at 602 North Oakwood Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taber.
My name is Chris Taber, Principal Planner for the Builds Department. The applicant MMRS LLC has requested that their property at 602 North Oakwood Avenue be rezoned from agricultural to multifamily residential. The property is approximately three acres and is currently vacant. This request is compatible with both the city's comprehensive plan and adjacent land uses, which include existing multifamily units. There is capacity for this development in the city's water, wastewater systems, and as well as in the transportation system. Staff recommends approval for this rezone application.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-71 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri authorizing the city administrator to enter into a public donation agreement with United Pentecostal Church Republic, formerly Apostolic Life Center Incorporated, UPCR, for donation of land to the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir.
Good evening. Garrett Brickner, Engineering Manager for City Republic. This property in question is the one that's directly behind the Pentecostal Church on Missouri 174. The property is mostly floodplain and there are downstream flooding issues on Logan Street in particular. The idea would be they would donate the property to us. We would go in and do stormwater improvements and then in the future, with the potential of this property to become a city park. At the time that it does become a city park, the owner, the current owner has asked that it be named Joshua Morris Park. I believe he was a former council member. So this ordinance would allow us to enter into that agreement with the current owner. So staff is recommending approval.
Do you have a timeframe for when this might be expected to be a park?
We're looking at doing the stormwater improvements. We have those budgeted and planned for next year. As far as becoming an actual park, could be, next year could be the year after. Don't really have that planned out that far yet.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for this first reading of Bill 21-72 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri approving budget amendment number three to the budget for the fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi.
Hello. Megan Cook, Finance Director. This is for budget amendment three for fiscal year 2021. And the major changes are just changes to some expenditures that we didn't capture originally. Land acquisitions that was broken out in multi-funds, which you'll see the breakdown as included in the item analysis. And then there was a land acquisition for the street fund. There were some fuel increases, so we've increased some of those lines to accommodate the added expenditures due to fuel cost increases. And repairs and maintenance, credit card fees we increased because it wasn't originally accounted for properly. So I've increased that. And then I removed the Public Works or Builds building in the 2021 budget because it's being moved to the 2022. And then for revenues to offset some of those expenditures, we've increased the sales tax line items because we have a higher trend, as you can see with some of the financial reports that we have submitted. And then election reimbursement from Green County was in the general fund, state motor fuel tax, impact fees, business surtax, and there's just other miscellaneous items that are listed out. I just didn't want to go line by line into all the different changes, but if you have any questions, I do welcome those. The other major change is that I'm adding a new fund for grants because we have so many different, so much different activity that's going to be grant related. And that will be Fund 250, and so I'm hoping to set that up this year to move them out of the other funds that they were put into so that we can actually account for those and track them separately. And that way it leads us into the 2022 budget as well. So with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council? Alright, seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 10 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-73 by title only.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri appropriating from the revenue of the city of Republic, Missouri expenditures in accordance with the fiscal year 2022 budget of the city of Republic, Missouri and providing for adjustments thereto.
Thank you, ma'am. You still going?
Yep.
Alright, keep going.
Alright. This is an ordinance to recommend approval for the 2022 budget. This covers $42 million in expenditures, 40 million in revenue, and fund balance of 14 million projected for the beginning of the year. So the only changes that we really had from the previous discussion was that, sorry.
Well, I mean, it couldn't be that big of a change.
No.
The numbers aren't that big. I mean...
We just did, can you remind me, Jared? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Chair Keeling, Assistant City Administrator. We had some minor changes for the total amount and the employee health insurance actually came in a little lower than we thought, so that was adjusted across all funds. We had longevity pay that we had forgotten in the original budget. That amount over all the funds totaled around $24,000. And there was a wastewater purchase, which I'm not privy to. I think it's here actually going to come before you tonight. That was added late. So those are the three changes.
And this is all building off the very long workshop we did last week.
Yeah, but we did want to make sure we noted those three changes for you this evening. So the numbers are slightly different than what was presented to you last Tuesday or Thursday, whatever that day was.
I don't remember either. I'm not even sure it was last week, to be honest.
Yeah, well, it may not have been.
Alright. Alright, hearing all of that, is there anything else?
No.
Questions from council? I know we all went through a very long workshop about that. There are some amendments here. Any questions about the budget itself or the amendments? Seeing none?
No, but I, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So as a businessperson, hearing that, when I hear that your expenses are $42,698 and your revenue is only 40 million, please explain that that is a grant that we're spending, just so, just could you elaborate on why the expenditures are higher by $2 million than the revenue? Because that would scare me to death if I was hearing that online.
Totally understood. Actually, two things equate to that. Yes, we did receive ARPA funds in the amount of 3.2 million. And we've received additional, we've received half of those funds in '21. We're going to save half of those funds in '22. So as the revenues is coming in at 1.7 million, we're going to expend 3.4 in 2022. So there's a $1.7 million difference. The other part of that is due to a fairly decent '21 and, I'm sorry, fairly decent '20 and a good '21, a lot of our funds are carrying fairly healthy cash balances and we're not in the business of having large cash balances. So we are budgeting in a deficit in some of our funds, but that is obviously totally fine, kosher with state law and everything else, but we're spinning down our cash balances a little bit to attack projects, assist in other areas where it's needed, so.
So essentially, we're putting the people's money back to work versus building a big bank account.
See, you said that very eloquently. Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
It's like you've been preaching that.
Well, I just, when I hear 42, I'll be like, how do you lose $2 million a year? We're not.
Any other questions from council, hearing all of that? Alright, seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 11 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-74 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri amending Title VIII Fees, Chapter 805 Fee Schedule.
Thank you, ma'am. You're on a roll. Keep going.
Alright. This is an ordinance to update our fees, our fee listings. Sorry, words are hard. So with that, these changes are mainly with the Builds Department. And then our wastewater rates are increasing, so that's encompassed there. Along with the Parks and Recreation, they've reevaluated their fee structure as well. And with that, it's just due to cost of staff pay for a lot of the different services that we provide. And so we want to make sure that we're recapturing those fees appropriately. So I don't want to go through line by line, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions from council on this issue?
I was just curious, are you getting any pushback from builders? Or is there any frustration with the fee increases that we've been doing?
I will let Andrew speak to that.
Is that a touchy subject?
Good evening. Andrew Nelson, Builds Administrator. So how we evaluate these fees, we look at surrounding communities. We look at what we would call a time study of what it takes for our staff to say, do a rezoning. And then we adjust those fees accordingly. We don't, we haven't had any pushback. We've pushed it out to the developers that are coming in and doing rezonings and things like that. We haven't, for the most part, not a substantial increase. We're still lower on most of those fees than surrounding communities. And we're going to try to stay there. We don't want to overcharge by any means, but we do have to recapture, you know, costs associated with administering those permits and fees and things like that. You know, if you look at impact fees, for example, meters are kind of a hot commodity at the moment. Really, anything waterline related is a hot commodity. We're seeing prices anywhere from 20 to 40% increases, depending on what you're looking at. So those fees are adjusted to encompass that cost.
Any other questions? Alright, once again, please get with staff before the next council meeting if you have any questions, as this is a first read. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions. Item number 12 on our agenda, this is 21-R-54. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving, you're right, words are hard. Approving a preliminary plat for Joson Properties, a commercial subdivision consisting of approximately 5.7 acres located at 3030 East US Highway 60. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 21-R-54.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant, Joson Properties, has requested review and approval of a preliminary plat of approximately 5.7 acres at 3030 East US Highway 60, consisting of a commercial subdivision containing two general commercial, or C2, zoned lots and infrastructure. The plat has been reviewed and conforms with the city's review criteria. The preliminary plat is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. A traffic impact study was required during this review. The parcel currently has two entrances off of US 60. In compliance with the study, the easternmost of these two entrances will be eliminated and the westernmost will be replaced with a 35-foot wide cross-access easement spanning the two proposed parcels. This entrance will be only right in, right out. The particulars regarding construction will be specified during the review process for infrastructure and building plans of the subject parcels. The property currently has access to municipal sewer and water. Exact configurations, including water and sewer main and line placement, as well as any required looping, will be evaluated during the review process for infrastructure of the plat. Both the water and sewer systems have capacity to serve the development. There is no floodplain present on the property. There is one identified sinkhole at the southwest corner of the property. The preliminary plat has been designed to incorporate the required 30-foot sinkhole buffer. A stormwater detention area is located near the eastern property line. A stormwater report will be reviewed during infrastructure design review. The detention area and all common or open space will be maintained by the Property Owners Association. Language to this effect will be included in the final plat. Staff considers the proposed preliminary plat in general conformity with the requirements for preliminary plats and is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I'd like to do. All those in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries eight to zero. Moving on to item number 13 on our agenda, this is 21-R-55. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of Republic and Lester E. Cox Medical Centers for the purpose of continued operations of Cox Fitness Center/Republic located within Republic Community Center. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 21-R-55.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Keely.
Thank you, sir. Ever since the Republic Community Center opened in October of 2003, we've been fortunate enough to have Cox Health Systems operate Cox Fitness Center out of our facility, plus or minus 10,000 feet. They pay us an annual rent. The proposed agreement before you tonight is a three-year extension to the agreement. The current agreement expires on December 1st, 2021. This will take it all the way to December 1st, 2024. The proposed agreement, no changes in the existing agreement, other than the rent amount will stay the same. In previous agreements, we have included a 3% escalator at this time. However, in working through Cox and their director, Chris Flower, they've had challenges in COVID, so we agreed at this point to keep the amount frozen. And that amount is $115,926.67. We're proposing to keep that frozen for the next three years. So that amount would be good for the 2022 year, the 2023 year, and the 2024 year.
Any chance they're going to go back to 24-hour a day?
So I asked Jennifer right before I stepped to the podium, we don't know that yet. Obviously, they're still taking COVID precautions. And part of their COVID precautions, they have to have someone there to ensure temperatures and masking, so they have to staff it full-time. Prior to COVID, they didn't have a staff member in there all the time. They just had the automatic doors and everything. So they are having staffing, they're incurring those costs, so that's part of the reason why they're not. I don't know an immediate answer when they might go 24/7, but I know the desire of the community is there to return to 24/7, so.
Thank you.
You're right.
Questions from council?
I will say this, and I probably already said it, but they are terrific. I mean, they are absolutely terrific. State of the art, clean as a whistle. We do pay utilities and we do the facility maintenance in the space. They take care of all the equipment. They take care of all the maintenance on the equipment. Our relationship with them is tremendous. We so much value them having them in their space. They are subject matter experts. And they're a wonderful asset to our community, so.
Alright, seeing no questions, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I'll do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion, excuse me, resolution carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 14 on our agenda. That's right, right? Item number 14 on our agenda, this is 21-R-56. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri approving a list of qualified engineering and architectural firms for as-needed use in 2022. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 21-R-56.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Sir.
Good evening. Garrett Brickner, Engineering Manager for the city. The city sent out requests for qualifications from qualified engineers and architects. We received those submittals and reviewed them in-house. The idea is that instead of sending out a request for qualifications every time we need somebody to do a project, we just do this one, we get a list of engineers that we can use. And then when a specific project comes up, like the Morris Park project I mentioned earlier, we select three to four firms off that list, look at them a little harder, score them based on their particular experience with those kind of projects, and then select the best one out of that list. Once that has been selected, we come back to council for approval of the contract with them. So the engineers on this list, most of them were on the list last year. New ones are Garver, Great Rimber Engineering, and Paragon Architecture. And even though they're new, we still work with them on other projects on the private side too, so.
Thank you. Questions from council?
When you, when you pick one, do you still have to do a bid between a couple to make sure they come in the right price point? Or similar price point?
So...
Or will you just be confident in their pricing?
Once we, so it's qualification-based selection, so once we select a firm, we begin negotiations with them, and if we can't agree on a price with them, then we have to move to the next one. We can't actually compare prices, but we do take that into consideration. And if they're way out of the ballpark, we will move on. We have done that before, so.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries eight to zero. Moving on to item number 15 on our agenda, this is 21-R-57. A resolution to approve the purchase of a dry pump from Fluid Equipment for wastewater lift stations. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 21-R-57.
Motion. Second.
We have a thousand motions and some seconds. Sir.
Hello, I'm Jason Davis. I'm the Operations Manager here at the city. The Builds Department on October 7th received two sealed competitive bids for this dry prime pump for our collection system and our lift stations. This emergency pump is, will mostly be used primarily at the Shuler Creek Lift Station, but it can be used at other lift stations. Utility Department requests the purchase of a Godwin Dry Prime Pump supplied by Fluid Equipment. This is a trailer-mounted Caterpillar diesel engine-powered 8-inch pump that can produce 2,500 gallons a minute, which can pump directly into the force main and pump to the treatment plant. This is comparable to one of the pumps at the lift station right now. This dry power pump is the same model that we have used in the past when we did the renovation of the Shuler Creek Lift Station back in 17, I believe. And we've also used this during an emergency event we had recently. During the renovation of the lift station, we had piping installed so we can directly hook this pump up in a matter of minutes and be back in service. We have always rented this pump in the past. But the downfall is to just renting this pump, the closest one is in St. Louis. And so we had to send two people to St. Louis to get this pump last time. And the cost, we spent close to 50K on just renting this pump for that recent event. We feel this pump is a necessary piece of equipment for the collection system just to maintain service for our customers and to be good stewards to our neighbors down the line. This is on, been put into the 22 budget.
Do we have questions from council on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Jason, would you please describe where the water goes if the pump doesn't work?
Do I have to? It goes right down Shuler Creek, which ends up Wilson's Creek, which could be...
Battlefield.
Battlefield.
Thank you. I think I asked that question last time. I knew the answer. I didn't want to hear it again.
So does this mean my kids shouldn't swim in my children's grade?
It is completely, it is completely fine. If we approve this resolution, how fast can you get this?
This pump will take 20 to 30 weeks. That's why I'm kind of starting the ball rolling right now.
Any other questions? Hearing none, and as this is a resolution and as it's really important, I call this for a vote right now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution thankfully carries eight to zero. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron, do you have something to say?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to, we went through a $42 million budget, started in July on that process. Sometimes we go through it, sometimes so fast that I don't know if the community really sees how much work and time went into it. But I also want to put a special shout-out to this council for taking the bold step to place a ballot measure before our community to consider the public safety sales tax that was approved by our citizens and to thank them for their support, overwhelming support of 71% approval of that measure that absolutely freed up this budget. Looking at the measure, I'm hoping that the community, once we go through the second read, will clearly see the budget on the public safety, on the police and fire. It's clearly articulated where the sales tax is being allocated. You will also see in those measures that, or in those budgets, that none of the previous funding to those budgets has been cut. So they're still receiving the same transfer from the general fund to make that happen. So we did not, you know, do a bait and switch and move it over so that we could create those funds. We're still going to have to continue to grow in those numbers. But there was a lot of work that goes into this budget because you've got ARPA funding that came in the year. When you're accounting for those things, it's one thing to receive it, it's another thing to account for it. So to demonstrate that, to showcase to the community that we use the money, we're going to continue to use the money if we can ever truly know the spirit of what it's supposed to be used for. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but I appreciate the work that the staff, Jared, for taking the lead on that, for Megan, in the middle of that, having your first child to negotiate that and to come back, what, four weeks and you had to present? And I think you've done a fantastic job with that. Did a great job tonight presenting the budget, not reading it to us. I thought that was a fantastic job because there's page after page after page. And so it's available for people to review, and I encourage folks to look online at the packet. The budget is in there and you can find all that information. So great job for the work. You make it look so easy. And I appreciate the work that was presented and how you've very much taken care of the community's money. And we said it before this council before, it's not monopoly money to us. We didn't go on a spending spree. We still have cash positions. We're going to wait until certain times of the year to decide whether we're going to buy or spend, to see how the economy is doing, to see if our growth and trends continue to move in the same direction. So I appreciate that. I wanted just to bring you a quick update. Last council meeting, you authorized us to engage with Stiefel Nicholas for underwriting services for the wastewater plant. We started that work immediately, I believe in January 12th or 13th. We're having our S&amp;P call. Hopefully, we'll be able to close on the bonds and have the funds in place by February, which puts us on target to be under compliance with DNR's compliance regulations. So again, thank you for your quick action there. And for Stiefel, there will be a contract on the next city council agenda for contract services that will be helping us with advisory services on dealing with ARPA funds and getting additional funding for the wastewater treatment plant. As you know, I geeked out a little bit at the last council meeting talking about a... $150 million worth of infrastructure improvements. About $82 million were required to make to address the wastewater plant. So we are going to have some advisory services assisting us with working through ARPA funds. We are going to begin to work collectively with legislative bodies, trying to negotiate through that, looking forward to bringing that forward, and hopefully we'll be successful. As we stated, Andrew went to the, went to Jeff City, correct? Yeah, the day before, and then two days later, you was in, yeah, I stayed at home. No, but we, we kind of tag teamed it, so he did a fantastic job, meeting with the Department of Natural Resources, a lot of support there. But again, we'll see when we submit the applications, it'll be very competitive. But looking forward to trying to work through this, through this, with the, with some advice and some advisory services with the mayor, council members. We're going to engage everyone to ask and participate in trying to find ways to reduce the amount of money that we're exposed to, to, to pay for these services, but we're going to work very hard to do that. Again, we got the $10 million for MM Highway, we got, I mean, I, we were sitting here a year ago, didn't know where we're going to come up with $36 million to widen it. We have almost every bit of it, but 3.2 million now, and I believe we'll find that as well. And then the, the last piece, oh, the MM property, we've mentioned this at some point, we're working on MM to get the alignment. We will be bringing a property purchase at some point through Andrew's efforts on those parts and negotiating with property owners. It's important to get the alignment of MM secured before development takes place in there, in fairness to the development community, and also to someone buying a piece of property and not being able to use it, because we're going to run our highway right through the middle of it. So we've been working to secure those properties, and the last thing I'll say, because this is the last meeting for Thanksgiving, it doesn't feel like it outside yet, knock on wood, but I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a happy holiday and a safe one, and my all the best to, to all of you.
Thanks, sir. Reports from council. Ms. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, great opportunity today, speaking with the Cub Scouts and getting to see where they, coming to council, you know, seeing what goes on here in government. The older I get, the more I see the importance of the next generation, so I'm very thankful for that opportunity.